All right, we'll call the Spokane City Council Legislative Meeting to order for Monday, March 29, 2021. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Chair.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right. Thank you. We have three, no, excuse me, two proclamations this evening. The first is Month of the Military Child, and Councilmember Cathcart is going to be reading that.
Yeah, thank you. And it sounds like we have Colonel Bentley on the line to receive. Whereas thousands of brave Americans have demonstrated their courage and commitment to freedom by serving the armed forces of the United States of America in active duty, in active duty posts in Afghanistan, Iraq, and around the world, and whereas more than 1,900 students attached to Fairchild Air Force Base have been directly affected by the military deployment of at least one parent, and these children and youth are a source of pride and honor to us all. And it is only fitting that we take time to recognize their contributions, celebrate their spirit, and let our men and women in uniform know that while they are taking care of us, we are taking care of their children and youth. And whereas the recognition of Month of the Military Child will allow us to pay tribute to military children and youth for their commitment, their struggles, and their unconditional support of our troops, because when parents serve in the military, their kids are heroes too, and a month-long salute to military children and youth will encourage the local community to provide direct support to military children and families. Now therefore I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Month of the Military Child. I'll turn it over to Colonel Bentley to receive.
I don't know.
If you can ask him to hit star three on their phone.
Oh, Colonel Bentley, if you could hit star three on your phone, that will allow us to recognize you by phone.
Oh, it's Colonel Jack Jacobus.
Oh. He's here. Colonel, I think I used the wrong name, so if you could please introduce yourself and say a few words, we're so happy to welcome you here this evening.
I appreciate that. This is Colonel Gene Jacobus. I'm the Vice Wing Commander at Fairchild Air Force Base here, and on behalf of Colonel Bentley and Chief Guzman and the entire Team Fairchild team, including our families and our children, we want to say thank you very much. This means a lot to our military community. To have such a wonderful community helps highlight not only the value of our families, but specifically our children, and helps support them along the way. We pride ourselves in the fact that the majority of our families live off the installation in the community, and so they live, work, go to school, play with their friends, and are part of the community, so to be recognized in the community in this way means a lot, and we're certainly proud to be here in Spokane and have that level of support. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us tonight and for all that you and your members and families do for us all. Thank you so much. Before I move to the next proclamation, I just wanted to recognize, we don't have a proclamation or salutation, but today is National Vietnam Veterans Day, and there are people recognizing that around the community and the nation. And I just wanted to call out my own cousin, David Beggs, who served in combat in Vietnam and then died not that long after returning from an overdose, and we attribute a bit of that there, but know so many families who lost loved ones there in that conflict in all different capacities from this country and in Vietnam. So I want to recognize all those folks. Next up, we have Public Health Week proclamation from Councilmember Stratton, and we have with us Spokane Regional Health District Administrator Amelia Clark. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Amelia. It's good to see your face on the screen. Whereas since 1995, the American Public Health Association, through its sponsorship of National Public Health Week, has educated the public, policymakers, and public health professionals about issues important to improving the public's health, and whereas public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats, including disease and outbreaks such as the COVID-19 pandemic, measles, natural disasters, and disasters caused by human activity, and public health action together with scientific and technological advances has played a major role in reducing and, in some cases, eliminating the spread of infectious disease and in establishing today's disease surveillance and control systems. And whereas there is a significant difference in health status, such as obesity, poor mental health, and drug use among people living in rural areas compared with people living in urban areas, and this variance increases because rural residents are often more likely to face social determinants that negatively impact health, such as poverty, transportation barriers, and lack of economic opportunity. Now therefore I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim April 5 through the 11th, 2021, as Public Health Week in Spokane, and call upon our community to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders to better understand the value of public health and supporting great opportunities to adopt preventative lifestyle habits in light of this year's fame, building bridges to better health. And Amelia, as a board member, and as a citizen, and as a council member, I want to thank you and your staff for all your hard work this past year. This has not been an easy year, and you have all worked so hard, and you've kept it together, and it made us all feel like we know where to go to get the answers. So thank you, and I will turn it over to you for some comments.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Stratton. Just so thankful to the mayor and to city council members for, you know, supporting Public Health Week through the proclamation. We are going to be focused a lot on resilience and rebuilding. Through all of our activities that week, there will be different advertisements around the city and the county, and really, I think this is a great time, if you know someone in public health, to thank them along with all of the essential workers, because sometimes we forget about how essential public health is until we need it in the time of a pandemic and other times, you know, when it's a crisis. So I want to thank all of you for your support, and thank you so much for doing this.
Thank you, Amelia, for all your service and for being here with us tonight, and have a great week for public health. All right.
Council President.
Yeah.
Because we canceled that meeting, that one Monday meeting, I didn't get to read my endometriosis awareness month proclamation, and I wondered if I could do that now.
That would be fabulous. Thank you, Councilmember Burke.
Okay, well, thank you. So just for the council members, March is Endometriosis Awareness Month, and I hosted an event last week with a couple specialists and some women who are going through this, and we have had over 2,000 people view it, almost 3,000 now. And it was a really successful event, and so I just, you know, wanted to give a shout out to those women. There's also an article in The Spokesman about it on Thursday last week, so really feel like we got some good coverage about it, so this is really great. Whereas endometriosis, a condition that happens when tissues similar to the lining of the woman's uterus grows outside of the uterus, is one of the most common diseases that affects over about 200 million worldwide, and about one in every 10 women in the United States. And whereas endometriosis is often misdiagnosed or missed altogether due to the lack of education and awareness, and although more people know about the condition today, there's still a significant demand for greater understanding, especially when it comes to diagnosis and treatment options. And whereas because endometriosis can have a devastating effect on the quality of life due to the very painful symptoms and is the biggest cause of infertility in women, it is important for proper education and awareness about endo to begin early so that the diagnosis can occur at the earliest stage possible, and proper treatment can begin before ever reaching a critical point. Now therefore I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the community members of the Spokane, do hereby proclaim March 2021 as Endometriosis Awareness Month in Spokane, and to help highlight the importance of education, early diagnosis, and support for women with lived experiences with this disease. So thank you. The folks who were going to come decided not to, we already had our event, but they're out there, and thank you for indulging on my with me.
Well, I'm so glad you could read it tonight, and you all were rock stars last week getting the word out and amplifying it in a way that I've never seen in Spokane, so great work doing that. That was awesome. Okay, we're now going to go to our legislative agenda. I'm going to go a little bit out of order because we have three people who are seeking appointment upon nomination of the mayor tonight. I thought we should do those first, and I'm going to first invite Tanya Wallace to introduce Richard, Rick Giddings, as the Fleet Services Director for the City of Spokane. That's Resolution 20, oh, I guess you should read that. Go ahead.
Resolution 2021-27, approving the appointment of Richard Giddings as Fleet Services Director for the City of Spokane.
I'll turn that over to you, Tanya.
Thank you, council members, council president. Yes, I am very excited, and you've heard a little bit about the process, but I'm very excited to introduce Rick Giddings to serve as our fleet director. He has previously served as the General Manager for Les Schwab Tire Center, which has a great customer service reputation, and he has served in that capacity for over 20 years. So he is going to bring his leadership, industry knowledge, and management experience to the city, and he's going to make a great addition to our team. So there's Rick.
Okay. Thank you. I know that we've, the city has supplied materials to council members, and I had a great meeting with Rick. I don't know if anyone else has any comments or questions for Rick. I see him on the line. All right, we had a little bit of a send-off for David Payne, who's been acting director there for a long time earlier today, and appreciated his service to that. If there's no other comments, then let's have a roll call vote on Mr. Giddings' appointment as Fleet Services Director. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Giddings, congratulations. You've been appointed by 7 to 0 vote, and we look so forward to working with you on upgrading our fleet and procedures and doing so many exciting things, and we're happy to have your experience and skills to take us through that. So thank you for that. Now, Madam Clerk, if you'd read from Resolution 28.
Resolution 2021-28, approving the appointment of Jeff Teal as Facilities Director for the City of Spokane.
Tanya, take it away.
Again, thank you, Council President and council members. It is my pleasure to introduce you to Jeff Teal to serve as our Facilities Director. He comes from the Community Colleges of Spokane, where he has served as the Director of Maintenance and Operations for nearly 15 years. So he also comes with a wealth of experience that ranges from custodial, grounds, security, and facility systems management. So with his extensive experience in management and successful collaboration, I want to welcome him to the city and turn it back over to you, Council President.
All right. Any questions, comments? All right, well, thank you, Mr. Teal, for being here this evening. We'll have a formal roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, it's a 7 to 0 vote. Welcome, Mr. Teal. We have lots to work on with you in upgrading our facilities and planning for really the space that we live in, in the post-COVID world. So thanks so much. We look forward to seeing you soon at one of our meetings. And with that, we'll go to Resolution 26.
Resolution 2021-26, approving the appointment of Marlene Feist as Public Works Division Director for the City of Spokane.
All right, and we've got Mr. Simmons as her soon-to-be predecessor. Go ahead, Scott.
Yes, good evening, city council members. Marlene doesn't really need an introduction, but for those of the rest of the audience who are watching on the call, Marlene's been with the city since 1998. Throughout her tenure, she's steadily progressed into additional responsibilities, additional roles. She's a very reliable public servant, creative, and strategic thinker, and truly wants what's best for our community, with a strong communication skills and her intimate knowledge. I think she's had some really unparalleled knowledge of city operations and especially in the public works. She's going to be able to step in this role as the Director of Public Works and continue the great service that's being provided to our community. So it's my honor to introduce Marlene for appointment confirmation consideration, and I just want to also thank city council members for the accelerated process that you all allowed for with these three confirmations. I believe Marlene's on the phone if anyone had any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Marlene? As you mentioned, we know her quite well. I do have one member of the public that would like to comment on this, and that is Nicolette Occultree, if you want to hit star three. I first need to apologize to Nicolette. Last meeting, we didn't remember open forum. She was the one speaker signed up, and I apologize for that, and I provided a message via Councilmember Cathcart that I would give her extra time in open forum this week to make up for that. But welcome to comment on this. If you want to introduce yourself, Nicolette, and you have up to three minutes.
Hello, I'm Nicolette Occultree, and it's okay for forgetting me, I understand. I just wanted to first congratulate Marlene Feist for being the first woman to be in her role. I think that's really excellent. And I just had a quick question. I know that Scott Simmons will also be leaving us to become the Chief Executive for Spokane County. Congratulations to him, too, on that. Since he has been interim city administrator, my only question is, who will act as interim city administrator until the new city administrator is hired? Thank you for your time.
And I'll just respond briefly. I talked to the mayor today about that, and they haven't quite decided that yet, but they will decide it before Scott's last day, and then we'll be hearing about it, but they're working on it. So, great question. Thanks, Nicolette. Any council commentary? All right, let's go to a vote. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
A big celebratory aye.
All right. Great. Well, that is a 7 to 0 vote, Marlene, which is a great way to start, and everyone, I can tell you, on the council is really excited to be working with you and to see where we go as a city. So thank you so much. Congratulations. And Scott, this is probably your last chance that you're going to be appearing with us as from inside the city. You might be coming back as a guest speaker. Thank you for all your work these years and really keeping things buttoned up, and I just personally appreciate all the work we've done in terms of public works on the Public Works Committee and sustainability that we have. We wish you really well at the county, and we look forward to you being a bridge between us on resolving some of the regional issues that we all so badly want to do, and I just think we need better communication to do. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Council President. And I'll just say, I came across a document today that was, I think, Marlene had put together, that went back and looked at some of the initiatives and accomplishments that we had finished and accomplished in the last seven, eight years, and it was truly astounding and a good recollection of what's been done, and that's a testament to city council, city staff, and our community has really benefited from all that. So look forward to continuing the collaboration on the other side of the river.
All right. Awesome. All right, well, let's go back to the top of the agenda. We deferred the first ordinance, 36028, for further discussions with staff, and that brings us to ordinance 3629.
Ordinance C 36029, general fund from unappropriated reserves, $9,875,000 to various accounts, same amount. This action allows budgeting for prior year costs related to the recently approved police guild contract.
All right, and we have one member of the public to testify on that. It's Nicolette Occultree, if you want to hit star three. All right, you're there, Nicolette. If you want to introduce yourself, you have up to three minutes.
Hello again. As I recall, on March 1, when you guys voted to approve the police guild contract, the related expenses on the form indicated that the cost of the contract would be $9.5 million. So today, as we're getting ready to actually pay the bill, that number is significantly higher at $9,875,000. That's a difference of $375,000, which is close to the cost of a three-to-four-bedroom house here in Spokane. Obviously, that's outrageous, but another topic for another day, but it's a significant number for the average citizen. According to the United States Census Bureau, in 2019, the median income for an individual person in Spokane was $27,723, meaning it would take someone who makes that amount every year 13 and a half years to make $375,000. And of course, that's before taxes and without spending a penny of it. So while $375,000 may seem like a drop in the bucket in comparison to the City of Spokane's roughly $1 billion a year budget, that amount is quite significant in the eyes of the average citizen. So my question is, is there any way that you can explain why the amount went from $9.5 million to nearly $9.9 million? And if you can, please offer that explanation before you guys vote. Thank you for your time.
We have, Tanya Wallace, if you're still on the phone, I don't know if you can explain. I think it has to do with the general expectation and then the final calculations, but...
And I apologize, I stepped away for just a moment to let my dog inside the house.
Oh.
If the question could be repeated...
Yes. The question was, when we approved the police guild contract, it was estimated we'd have to take $9.5 million out of reserves, but when we're actually getting around to doing it, it's $9,875,000. So the question from a member of the public was, why is, what's the explanation for that difference?
Thank you, Council President, for that explanation. In part, two reasons. The first estimation was done early on in the negotiation in the fall, before the 2020 year had closed, and now that the 2020 year closed, we updated that estimation based on those subsequent months of costs.
Okay, all right. All right.
Does that help explain?
That is, that was my understanding, but it's great to hear from the person who's in charge of actually figuring that out, so thanks for that. Any council commentary on essentially this budget transfer from reserves to the police fund to pay, back pay for the last few years? All right, we'll go to a formal vote. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes 7 to 0. I'm just thankful that we managed our money enough, that we have plenty of money in reserves to pay that long overdue back pay. So thanks for making that happen, and let's go to the next special budget ordinance.
Ordinance C 36030, solid waste collection fund from Public Works Business Services Director, $30,000 to operating transfers out, IT same amount, and Fleet Services Fund from Assistant Director Fleet Services, $30,000 to operating transfers out, same amount, and IT fund from various accounts, $60,000 to various accounts, same amount. This action allows for staff support of the city's fleet management and recycling management systems.
All right, there's no public comment on this. Any council commentary or questions? All right, let's have a vote. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes 7 to 0. And the next one.
Ordinance C 36031, Public Works and Utilities Fund from various accounts, $79,807 to, I interfund other general governmental services, same amount, and general fund from interfund engineering services, $79,807 to various accounts, same amount. This action allows the transfer of the administrative specialist position currently in the Public Works and Utilities Department to the Engineering Department.
All right, there's no requested public comment on this. Any council commentary or questions? All right, hearing and seeing none, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Burke. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. And one more special budget ordinance.
Ordinance C. 36032, Channel 5 Fund from Unappropriated Reserves, $6,400 to contractual services, same amount. This action allows reimbursement to school district number 81 for capital equipment purchases.
All right, and there's no public comment on this one as well. Any council commentary or questions? Seeing none, let's have a roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We deferred the first regular resolution, 21, for two weeks, I believe, and we are now at the next resolution, if you want to read that.
The first one was deferred to April 12th, 2021.
Yep.
Yep. Resolution 2021-22, recognizing the Fifth Avenue Community Strategy developed by the Fifth Avenue Initiative stakeholders and community as a declaration of priorities and actions to revitalize East Fifth Avenue between Liberty Park and Thor Freya Streets in the East Central Neighborhood.
I have one community member who would like to testify, Sandra Williams.
Do you have planning on to give a presentation, too, if you want to do it first?
Oh, before we get to that, Sandy, planning is going to give us a presentation. Looks like that might be Maren.
Thank you. Yeah. My name's Maren Murphy. Thank you all for having me tonight. One moment, while I get my screen ready. All right, so yeah, thank you for having me tonight to present about the Fifth Avenue Initiative Community Strategy, and the Fifth Avenue Initiative is a neighborhood-driven effort in partnership with the city to reimagine East Fifth Avenue in the East Central Neighborhood. And I want to quickly recognize that one of our project members is joining us today or tonight, Reverend Lonnie Mitchell, and I will do a brief overview and then invite Reverend Mitchell to share some words and then open up for further discussion and consideration. There we go. Okay. Yes?
No, I just said, "That's great."
All right. Okay. So, the project focused on Fifth Avenue from Liberty Park to Thor Freya and the freeway to the Bluff, and the outcome is a community strategy that provides actions for improvement, programming, and community building for citizens and businesses along the Fifth Avenue corridor. There are close to 2,500 residents and just over 1,000 housing units in the area, and the neighborhood is one of the most racially and ethnically diverse areas of the city, and the stakeholders identify this as a strength and an important part of the legacy and identity of the neighborhood. There's also a long history of inequality in the area. As one of the oldest neighborhoods in Spokane, East Central had a prosperous early history that was followed by economic decline, discriminatory housing practices like redlining in the 1930s, and construction of the I-90 freeway through the neighborhood in the 1950s. But still, on the face of these, the community continued to fight for the livelihood of the neighborhood and the residents, and in 1970s, the League of Women for Community Action planned and fundraised for the East Central Community Center, which was actually the first community center to open in the city. And this history is important because it provides the backdrop for many of the challenges the neighborhood continues to face today, but also speaks to the resilience and the commitment of the community to reimagine and revitalize the Fifth Avenue area. And this is also part of the reason why this initiative came about, as one way to address inequities and impacts that have occurred over time. So, today, the Fifth Avenue area is rich in civic and institutional organizations, faith-based groups, community services that support both residents and the larger area. There's a variety of parks and trails and natural features, and along Fifth Avenue, there are a few longstanding businesses in addition to some new businesses that are moving in. And the city has assisted the area in recent years by investing in sidewalk improvements and planting new street trees along Fifth Avenue, and the effort now is to move forward the priorities and vision that the community put together and have that recognized by the city. One area of note, one upcoming opportunity, is the East Central Library is being relocated, and a new library will be built in Liberty Park with nearly double the space and will feature a children's zone for programming. There's a lot of exciting activity going on that will hopefully be a catalyst for some of this change that they hope to see. So, from the beginning, the Fifth Avenue Initiative focused on inclusion and reflecting the diversity of the community. The process builds on previous discussions over the last five years. We reengaged the community in 2019 with a small project team, and we hosted three stakeholder meetings and two community forums in late 2019 and early 2020, and then we developed the draft strategy in February 2020, right, of course, before COVID-19 paused the project, among many other things. But the community kept on it and kept advocating for it, and so we started the process again earlier this year, and in February of 2021, we held a plan commission workshop and a public hearing, and the plan commission voted to recommend the city council adopt by resolution, which brings us to where we are tonight. And I just want to acknowledge the many stakeholders who attended meetings and participated in discussions over the years, including our recent project team, and we deeply appreciate everyone's time, energy, and focus on the Fifth Avenue Initiative. We do have the strategy materials on the city website. We have a small link there at the bottom, and the community envisions Fifth Avenue to be an area of opportunity for current residents and inviting place for people all over Spokane to come and visit. I should say for current and future residents, as well as for people to come and visit. And I'm not going to go through all the priorities, but I do just want to highlight that they speak to defining the Fifth Avenue identity further, promoting coordination and collaboration, improving the streetscape, preserving and expanding housing affordability, and anti-displacement measures, promoting neighborhood commercial opportunities, and protecting and enhancing parks and trails. And so, if adopted, the strategy will recognize the community's efforts and priorities over the years for the Fifth Avenue area, and hopefully continue the focus on implementation of the strategy. So, I would like to invite Reverend Mitchell to share a few words on behalf of the project team, if he's able to.
Thank you, Maren. And first of all, I just want to thank the council for taking this up, and I just want to thank the city for partnering with the East Central community for revitalizing the Fifth Avenue area. Wow, what a great success this is going to be. So, we really, really appreciate all the work that we're doing. I remember when we first started talking about the Fifth Avenue Initiative, one of the things that we talked about was preserving the historical flavor of the community and engaging stakeholders to partner with the city to build and revitalize our community. And so, back in 2019, the city and a lot of the community members pretty much put their effort into this initiative and trying to move forward and try to help it along. I just want to just give high commendations to Rodney McGully and Maren, who have really put this initiative forward and have done the work to do the things that they have to do. So, I just want to say, you know, the approval of the resolution, in my opinion, is needed to give the Fifth Avenue Initiative legitimacy and mercurial direction to advance the revitalization work already driven by a community engagement momentum toward completion. And so, I strongly recommend that the council unanimously take up this resolution and pass it forward. Thank you, guys, so much. We appreciate all the work that you are doing on the council. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Pastor Mitchell. It's great to see your face here again at our meeting, and I hope official retirement is treating you well. I know you're not really retired because you've got your eyes on this project and others, so thank you.
Hey, Marlene, I got to say this about retirement. Retirement is so good to me. Retirement is so good, you know, it's enjoying me.
Okay.
That's just how good retirement is.
And I wasn't going to say it, but I see the picture of Alicia behind you of her album cover, which I have been listening to lately and really enjoying, so please give her my best. All right, I think I was... Oh, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just a real quick question from Maren. I didn't realize till I saw the slide with the timeline that these conversations had begun about three years before the planning effort began, and I just wondered if Maren knows what the cause of that three-year gap was.
Yeah, I can speak to a little. It was before my time here, but I think that there was an initial process that brought people together and identified some strategies, but bringing it into an action plan, for whatever reason, it didn't get to that point. And so, we did build on that. We had a lot of notes to build on. Many of the stakeholders started at that process and then continued in this one. Under Mayor Condon, it was, I think Reverend Mitchell worked with Mayor Condon to get a partnership with Pastor Rodney McGully to help be a community liaison, and so he and I worked really closely together, and I think that was really critical in sort of building the conversation and bringing people together, perhaps in a way that might not have been fully realized last time. And so, I think, from my perspective, my experience, that was really beneficial, and then the focus turned to, okay, how can we turn this into a strategy and get it going?
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I'm just grateful to be able to support this and support our East Central community, so hopefully this will be a big positive.
Great. All right. I think I was, before I remembered that we were getting a presentation, I was going to call Nicolette Occultree to speak on this, if you're there, Nicolette. Oh, I'm sorry. I got that.
Sandy.
Yep, Sandy, no, I confused myself. Sorry. I know Sandy Williams signed up because it's written down on my note. So, Sandy, so great to have you here. Please introduce yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
Hi, am I there?
You are here.
Yay. So, I don't have a lot to say. I'm just really excited, and I couldn't let the opportunity go by without saying that I'm excited that city council is voting on this proclamation. It's been, East Central Neighborhood is dear to my heart. It was the first neighborhood that my family connected with when we moved here in 1973, has always felt like home to me, and so when the Carl Mackey Center found Fifth Avenue in the East Central Neighborhood as our home, it felt like coming home. So, East Central has been struggling to recover from the damage that was done when the freeway came in. I'm still struggling to recover, and so as economic development is coming to Spokane, I am excited to see focus being put on the Fifth Avenue corridor of the East Central Neighborhood so that we can uplift that part of Spokane as well, and it can join in on the economic development that is happening around the city. So, I look forward to more to come, and I look forward to you all supporting this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy, for your words and for all the work you're doing in that neighborhood. We really appreciate it. All right, council member commentary. Councilmember Kinnear.
I am so excited about this. I know that Megan Duvall helped with some of the history piece. I think that's important, to know where you've come, so to know where you're going, but this is a first step, and I see this as a way forward, but the next step is to find funding so that we can accelerate this process and really see this area blossom and see what it can become. So, let's not stop here with this resolution. Let's continue to move forward. Let's identify funding so we can get it going a little bit faster. At least, I'd like to see it mostly done in the next two and a half years before I'm done with council. That's my wish, so thank you.
Thank you. Other council member commentary, Councilmember Mumm.
I will back you up on that because we have seen where we invest in our neighborhoods and our neighborhood businesses and maybe match funds on facade improvements like we did on Monroe, or really partner with FTA like we did on East Sprague, that it really does give us a return on the investment. So, these plans are great. We have to back them up with the money, and so I'm happy to support the efforts of council to find the funding in order to do that.
All right. Councilmember Wilkerson.
I first want to thank the retired Reverend Lonnie Mitchell for not preaching tonight, so the rest of us have time to talk, but I am excited about the East Fifth Avenue Initiative, and Councilmember Cathcart, whatever the reason, really four and a half years was too long, and some of that was just leadership and the commitment, human capital, but there is a renewed energy in the neighborhood, and East Central is finally getting a little love that it has not had for many years. And I concur with Councilmember Kinnear and Councilmember Mumm. We find the resources to invest because words are really pretty, but it's going to take some capital to move this along, and I think Spokane is strategically placed right now to see this happen. It is our next real growth engine in the city, and I look forward to work with my council members and the neighborhoods to help them imagine all they can be in that neighborhood.
All right. Other council member commentary. All right, well, I just want to affirm everything that's already been said. I think this is a great plan, and this Reverend Mitchell's secret plan was to get Betsy Wilkerson on the city council to make this a reality, and she has spent the last year, if not every week, if not every day, every week, working to get us here, and Betsy, I just want to commend you for that because you have really led the way on that in things. But as so many council members have said, this is all great imagining what could be, but really, to make it a reality, it's going to take some money, and we have some money coming our way, not to promise everybody the money coming our way from the federal government, but this is certainly the type of projects that we're going to be looking at closely with a lot of community input. My real only concern is how we're going to make sure that we don't displace the current residents by making this the best neighborhood in the city, so I think we're going to have to think really long and hard about that and have some good strategies around that. But thanks to everyone for all the work that they've done, and we'll go to a council vote. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. And we deferred Resolution 23 for a month regarding the comprehensive plan update work plan, and that brings us to the next resolution.
Resolution 2021-24, settlement agreement with Ruffey Brothers Doing Business as Shamrock Paving Incorporated, $500,000.
All right, we don't have any community commentary. This was a long-running issue from a previous city paving contract that took us a while to get worked out, but we got worked out to everyone's satisfaction. Is there any council commentary? Is there any council commentary? Seeing none, let's have a vote. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President Sinai. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero. And that will bring us, no first reading ordinances, no special considerations, but we do have some hearings on five issues with accompanying ordinances. If you'd like to read the first one. Madam?
Amanda has a presentation for all.
Okay.
Council President.
Yes. Councilmember?
Might we take those all together?
We can, except, well, there's going to be one comment, but I'm going to have Amanda Beck is going to present on the entire package. So we'll have your presentation, Amanda, first. Then I've got one community member who wants to comment, and then we can take it as a package for vote, absent objection. All right, Amanda.
Did you want me to read it first?
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Amanda. I'm going to have the Madam Clerk read them first.
Okay. H1, Hearing on Final Reading Ordinance C36023 Relating to the Purpose of the Design Review Board Amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 4.13.015. H2, Hearing on Final Reading Ordinance C36024 Relating to Residential Zones Primary Uses Downtown Zones Limited Use Standards and Offsite Noise Impacts Amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 17C.110.100, 17C.124.110, 17C.220.060. H3, Hearing on Final Reading Ordinance C36025 Relating to Environmental Standards CPA Categorical Exemptions and Threshold Determinations Amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 17E.050.080 Appendix B. H4, Hearing on Final Reading Ordinance C36026 Relating to Construction Standards Notice of Hearing and Onings Amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 17F.010.050 and 7F.040.140. H5, Hearing on Final Reading Ordinance C36027 Relating to Design Review Board Administration and Procedures Land Use Application Procedures, PUD Vesting Planned Unit Developments and Subdivision Design Standards Amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 17G.040.04B, 17G.060.020A3, 17G.060.070B5C, 17G.070.220A, and 17G.080.070C5.
All right. Then Amanda, if you'd like to present on this.
Thank you. Sorry, let me just get this down so you guys can see a copy of yourselves. So there are 11 different sections of the code that are being amended. This is an update that is being completed as we haven't done kind of basic maintenance, if you will, on the code since 2015. All of the proposed changes are what we consider minor, which means they're correcting typos, they're updating cross-references to other sections of the code that have been amended or their names have changed, or we're changing words. So nothing is substantial. It doesn't change the intent, and it doesn't change any of the actual regulation itself. One thing I do want to point out is that on the March 22nd first reading, there was some public testimony, which the citizens asked staff to verify an update, a cross-reference that was to Chapter 10.08D. Currently, in the packet is a revised ordinance for C36024. After review and confering with the city attorney's office, staff decided that it was advisable to in fact pull back from a narrowed reference to 10.08D090. So instead of narrowly referring back to that chapter, which is about public disturbance noise, instead now the ordinance that is in your packet that you'll vote on refers to the city chapter on noise in general to ensure that there are no regulations in regard to noise that might be missed in that cross-reference.
All right.
Does the council have any questions that I can answer?
Go ahead, councilmembers. If you have questions, let me know because I can't see all of you right now. But, okay, I'm not hearing any. So any questions, councilmembers? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I just wanted to say it's great that on first reading, we had some input that really helped to fix an issue with one of you. So I think that's really good news.
Yep. Yep. And I'm so glad that you guys were paying attention and made that change. Thanks.
Ockletree's suggestion was great, so thank you for that.
Yeah. Any other council questions? I do have the same person who brought that up before to testify. Nicolette, if you want to hit star three. Okay. Go ahead and introduce yourself, Nicolette, and you have up to three minutes.
Hello, this is Nicolette Ockletree again. I just wanted to thank you guys because I did notice that change that you guys made between the narrow and wide scope interpretation of the cross-reference for the noise control. And I just wanted to thank you very much for paying attention and for making that change because even though it seems small, it obviously has a different sort of impact legally. And thank you for allowing us to speak on first hearings so that we can actually make those kinds of changes and suggestions as a member of the public. So thanks for that.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any further council commentary or questions? Seeing none, let's have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Oh. And by the way, we agreed we'd do all of them because nobody objected to just doing one of them, so thanks. Stratton. Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President Sinai. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay. Those all passed seven to zero. We do have open forum, but we don't have anything else on our legislative agenda. And so I'd like to invite Nicolette Ockletree to return by hitting star three. And you have up to six minutes if you want to use all of them for your open forum comments since you didn't have any last week. But, all right. Go ahead, Nicolette.
Well, I won't take that whole amount of time. I'm just going to read what I was going to read last week. And after I read it, you may see why it would have fit better with last week.
All right.
But regardless, here we go. The Monday before last, I attended the funeral of my father's father. He will forever rest near his father and his mother in Fairmount Cemetery in Spokane. May he rest in peace, as the resting is the thing we do after life. Such an odd and yet revered expression, rest in peace, for that matter. I hope people know he will rest in power in my soul and so deeply in the hearts of others for whom his life had an enduring impact, especially here in Spokane. I feel grateful he will now forever call the soil of Spokane his home. May it never be forgotten that the land in which we laid him to rest was once owned by indigenous tribes that gathered before us that day, and specifically that tribe for which our town was named, Spokane. Now, many people from Spokane will tell you that the name Spokane means children of the son. But this name has long been misinterpreted to mean son as in sunshine and not son as in offspring or child. For those who know the history of this region and the salish origins of the name Spokane, they know it means children of the son, S-O-N, and more specifically, children of the son of Chief Gary. When I first came to learn the origin of this name, I was overwhelmed with joy. Not only am I proudly born in Spokane, but I'm also the firstborn child of the son of Gary Ockletree, who is the son of Gary Ockletree. And although my father and my father's father are not direct descendants of the Spokane tribe, our family has called Spokane home for generations. And I feel my grandmother's grandfather, Jim Sorb, of the Sacanfox Nation, looking on in warm embrace. This land is precious, our lives are precious. Every day is but a slice to some and an everlasting memory for others. I'm so honored to be the quirky child that I am, a child of Gary, son of Gary, a child of Spokane, and an Ockletree, full stop and without a doubt. Among more importantly notable things, that Monday marked for me the largest gathering I've been a part of in over a year. We were all outdoors and masked, and yet it was an expressive pandemonium of strange fear and joy and love, just about everything in between, a day that I will never forget for a myriad of reasons. What I liked the most were the lighter things, the levity that uplifted sorrow, the stories that reminded us that we ought not focus on what we lose in the death of someone we love, but instead on what we've gained by their presence in our lives. And I am inextricably intertwined and woven into a fancy fabric that is me because of those who came before me. And I will forever be grateful and sing those truths in their name. Rest in peace and power, Grandpa Gary Ockletree. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing that. And that is the end of our meeting tonight. Please take care, and if you can't, take care of somebody else. We're adjourned.
Go Gonzaga.